Of, uh, um, what am I trying to say here? Uh, stabilizers for, for shoring up some of the banks where we have steep slopes, uh, so that we don't have to tie back into it. Um, on Tuesday, November 24th, we held a bid opening for the project. Um, we had a total of eight bidders that came to that bid opening, which is quite good for this time of the year and, and for this type of a project. Uh, the cost opinion from the engineer was 1,426,041 dollars and 85 cents. And the low bid for the project was 1,260,000. And that low bid was from Concrete Connection LLC out of Johnston. Um, we have done work with them quite a bit, uh, recently. They are the, the, uh, group that recently, uh, did the Pioneer Parkway Trail System. So, um, we have had good success and luck with them. Um, being that it was 11.5% under the cost opinion, um, was a definitely a positive with the project. We are looking to get started here shortly with any tree removal, um, uh, and that being the pines and those types of areas, uh, to get that process started. Um, we are still looking at, uh, some of the landscaping there if there is any possibility of trees, um, but that, that's one of those things that will come in as, as we get moving forward with the project. Um, with that, HR Green has, uh, recommended that we accept this contract from, uh, Concrete Connections and that we, uh, go ahead and get started on this project. I will take any questions you may have.
Any questions for John?
Um, no question, but just, uh, thank you for, uh, Concrete Connections doing this project. I'm, I will just say, I'm really excited that they're doing it. I thought the Pioneer Parkway Trail was like phenomenal in how quickly they did it. Um, and even better that they're the low bid, so thank you for that.
John, I would just, sorry.
No, I just could say we've worked well with, with Pioneer or with the Concrete Connections. This will be about the fourth project we've done with them over the last three or four years, so.
I was just going to say, John, I'm assuming you're working with Janet on a communication policy, uh, message when the trees start coming down. Um, it's always nice to have, give people a heads up on that and explain what's happening.
Yep, Corey Shannon and myself have, have been in contact with Janet and will continue making sure that she has information well out in advance before anybody, any kind of work gets done.
Great, thank you.
And, and John, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's been quite a bit of discussion with the homeowners association about the removal of those trees and, and the buffering that can be, um, put in place to provide kind of the barrier between the residents' homes and, and the street and the trail.
Correct. We, uh, we've worked, uh, we've had several meetings with, uh, homeowners association and we've had, uh, we just had, oh, probably about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, a virtual meeting with the, all the property owners that are adjacent into the project. And we had probably about eight or 10 that joined us virtually and, and asked questions in regards to it. And everybody is extremely excited about the fact that we've put the burms in as the visual barriers, cause once those pine trees had their lower branches removed, um, they lost a lot of that visible barrier to their windows. So, that's the number one thing we heard over and over again was, we'd like that visual barrier reinstalled.
So, John, this is kind of outside of, um, the scope of this project, but what is the plans for north of 62nd Avenue and the extension of the trail?
We do have it within our CIP, our five-year CIP. Um, we haven't looked at what that will be, obviously. Um, we'll have to look, uh, work quite a bit with Corteva on that project. The vast majority of the land that we would, I shouldn't say the vast majority, but probably approximately half of the property that we would need to obtain, uh, additional right-of-way would be utilizing Corteva. Um, we would want to keep it on the east side of the road, once again, to have that full connector, but it would be a, another tremendous component to our trail system.
Yep, yep. It's not going to be an easy project, but it's a, it's a critical connection between, um, you know, what we've got under construction now along 86th Street and, and the Northwest 70th Avenue trails, so.
Yeah, and all the work Matt's been doing with all this, the, between 62nd and 70th and 100th and installing trails as those roads are, are remodeled has been outstanding as well. So, this would be kind of a, one of the final pieces of, of the puzzle.
Yep, big piece. Any other questions or comments for John? Is there anyone in the, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone that is with us this evening that would like to, uh, comment on this project? If not, we will close the public hearing then at 7:16. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20-296?
So moved, Evans.
Second, Coe.
We have a motion, a second, send the vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20-97?
So moved, Evans. Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second, send the vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item 5B, conduct a public hearing and consider the following items related to the proposed rezoning of approximately 4.49 acres and adjoining right-of-way at 5605 Northwest 100th Street. Resolution 20-294 approving a development agreement with PCWDM2 LLC. First reading of ordinance 1045, amending the official zoning map, changing properties zoned IC Industrial Commerce Park to M1 Light Industrial District. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:17.
Hey, this is Aaron Wolf and this property, as you can see on this vicinity map here, it is located, uh, north of Northwest 54th Avenue and east of Northwest 100th Street. And it is in the West Park PUD. Um, it's in the blue crosshatch on your screen. As you can see, there's an existing building on the property and it was constructed around the year 2000, um, according to the Industrial Commerce Park, Park District regulations. And it is zoned IC within the West Park PUD. And the property owners are seeking a zoning change to the M1 district. And the reason is because they seek to conduct outdoor storage on the property. That is not allowed in the IC district, but it is allowed in the M1 district. And the, the, the potential purchaser of the property is American Fence and they intend to store, you know, fencing materials outdoors. Outdoor storage is allowed in the M1 district when it's shielded from view of the street and adjacent properties. So if this zoning change is approved, there would be a subsequent action that would come before the council to look at a site plan where they would, um, be constructing a fence and, and any other necessary elements to, um, shield that outdoor storage from view. Um, staff is supportive of the change, however, we don't intend to open up all uses of the M1 district, but rather just simply expand those uses to include outdoor storage. And the way we accomplish that is by use of a development agreement. I did include a copy of that with your staff report. And that development agreement limits bulk regs to those of the Industrial Commerce Park District. It also limits architecture to that in the Industrial Commerce Park District and it requires buffers that would be, um, required of the M1 district. So essentially I'm taking the more restrictive, um, uh, more restrictive things from both of the two districts. When we look at the surrounding uses here, you can see on the vicinity map, we have a city water tower immediately north of the property. It's the diamond shape there. Um, other parcels north and east are currently vacant. Um, to the south, there's a mid-American, uh, power distribution station. And this is actually sits on Johnston City Limits. So Northwest 100th Street divides Johnston on the east from Grimes on the west. So as you cross Northwest 100th Street, heading into Grimes there, those two properties are vacant. Um, there's, there's some, uh, high power lines there on that, you can see the squares. I think one of those might in fact even be a, um, a cell tower. And to the south is just vacant property that's currently being farmed. Again, those two properties are both in Grimes. And this zoning change would be compliant with our comprehensive plan. And I don't have anything further to add. Um, I did send notice to property owners within 320 feet. I received one phone call just from a realtor asking what the requested change was. They didn't have comments in support or against the request. It was just a request for information and have not heard from any other property owners. And I do believe we might be joined tonight by the property owner, um, or perhaps the realtor who might want to comment if you have questions for them. If you have questions for me, I can answer those now. Um, this is first reading of, uh, ordinance that would change the zoning on the property, but also I'm asking you to consider that, uh, development agreement that restricts uses of the property. And, uh, per, uh, Iowa law, we would have to approve that development agreement before we close the public hearing. Uh, does anybody have any questions for me on this zoning change?
If, Aaron, if you can go back to the, uh, the site. So the outside storage would be up in that, uh, upper, uh, right-hand corner, right?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, so there, it wouldn't be visible from the street.
No, not from the street. The building would block it, um, and then they would have to construct fencing that would obstruct the view from the adjacent properties to the north and east. Um, and one of the things I did place in that development agreement was a restriction that said, in the, um, industrial district, you can construct a fence that's up to 10 feet in height. We have had some instances in the past where companies have, uh, conducted storage that exceeds the height of the fence. And so one of the, uh, things that I put in that development agreement is that the outdoor storage is limited to the height of the fence. So we can't, uh, we can't require a 10-foot fence and then have 15-foot of outdoor storage.
That was going to be my next question, could they just pile it higher than the fence?
No, we, I tried to take care of that in that development agreement.
Perfect, perfect. And I think the, um, the development agreement, um, makes a lot of sense. Any other comments or questions on this item? If not, Aaron has informed us that we need to take action on the development agreement before we close the public hearing. Well, let me, let me just ask real quickly, is there anybody in the audience that is with us this evening that would like, this is a public hearing. Uh, is there anyone that would like to make, uh, any comments on this, this proposal? If not, then, uh, city council, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20-294?
I move, Ray.
Second, Coe.
We have a motion and a second, send the vote please.
Councilmember Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans? Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. We also have, um, so now we can go out of the public hearing, right, Aaron?
Yes.
So we will close the public hearing then at 7:24. And we have one additional action item, which is first reading of ordinance number 1045. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Coe.
Do we have a second?
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second, send the vote please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Martin.
Second, Coe.
We have a motion and a second, send the vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, item 8A, consider second reading of ordinance number 1044 and ordinance amending the Johnson devised ordinances of 2007 by amending chapter 90 to modify operation of curb valve and hydrants.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is Matt, Ryan, our Public Works Director. Um, we have not received any comments or changes that made to the, uh, language.
Council, any questions? Not, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1044?
So moved, Evans.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second, send the vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8B, consider approval of the following items related to PZK 2020. The minor subdivision for Johnson Crossing Platte One, the subject property is located north of Northwest Johnson Drive and west of the inner urban trail. Resolution 20-291, a resolution approving a development agreement regarding public trail for Johnson Crossing Platte One. Resolution 20-292, a resolution approving a development agreement regarding public parkland dedication for Johnson Crossing Platte One. And resolution 20-293, a resolution approving preliminary plot and the final plot for Johnson Crossing Platte One.
Good evening, this is Clayton. And Cindy, if I can get the preliminary plot actually. Um, as she's getting that, so Johnson Crossing LP has submitted this preliminary plot and final plot. It's the subdivision of 7.877 acres into two buildable lots. That'd be for future development, one lot for public parkland dedication and one public street lot. Um, this is the, her, from our Heard Gardens property, we talked about this in the work session, though not this specific proposal itself, but it is all generally related. So, the property, it was zoned earlier this year, i- is now zoned, uh, C3 on Lot One. That's our highway oriented commercial and mixed-use center. And Lot Two and the parkland lot, uh, the intention of this, uh, proposal is to facilitate the construction of a multifamily, uh, senior-oriented project on Lot Two there. And Lot A would be deeded to the city for parkland dedication with, uh, the intention to develop it as a public dog park. Um, so as proposed, the site is consistent with our zoning districts. Um, as, in regards to access, no new accesses are proposed at this time. Those would be detailed with future site plans. Um, one item that you do have for action is a development agreement regarding public trail. The developer was going to be doing sidewalk from the inner urban trail all the way down to Merle Hay Road, five-foot sidewalk, uh, in discussion with them. Uh, 10-foot public trail, uh, was more appropriate to facilitate pedestrian needs in the area in light of, uh, other developments that are in the near, near future as well as long-term. So what this agreement does is the city will pay the upsizing costs from the five-foot to the 10-foot. Um, but because of the timing of the road improvements at Merle Hay Road and Northwest Johnston Drive, uh, we didn't want them to be installing it and then it really just being in our way and us tearing it out. So what would be done is they would essentially construct the eastern half of the trail, a 10-foot wide. That would be the same cost equivalent as if they ran sidewalk the whole length. And then with our road improvement project, the city would construct the remainder from their terminus to Merle Hay Road. Um, and the intention is to have that completed within a two-year timeframe, um, with the construction of the multifamily and the road improvement projects, um, tentatively to be completed by spring of 2022 is kind of the tentative timeline there. There is, uh, all-appropriate utilities to service, uh, this development in the area as well as appropriate fire protection. Uh, there are a number of buffers that would be required, um, on the site. I'm not going to outline all of those. The one I would highlight is the southern buffer on Lot Two. That would be a 60-foot buffer between residential and industrial to the south. The applicant is requesting that be, an alternative buffer be accepted, which would be a 30-foot buffer, half the materials of a 60-foot buffer. That would be, uh, appropriate considering the adjoining right-of-way provides additional separation there. No drainage improvements are, are proposed at this time. Those would be detailed, uh, with future site plans, but generally the site does drain from west to east. I did briefly touch on parkland dedication. Uh, Lot A is intended to be developed as a public dog park and that would be a connection with, uh, park as well to the north is what, and tie into the inner urban trail network. And there is a development agreement stipulating that with the dedication of that, the parkland needs for Lot Two would then be satisfied. Um, portions of the site are within FEMA floodplain. Uh, Lot A is uncovered by, uh, what's generally called the 100-year floodplain. It is common and typical to put parkland, uh, in floodplain areas because they're typically not damaged since there's not a whole lot of vertical improvements. So, uh, no, no concerns there. Um, we did briefly touch on the, uh, roadway improvements during the, uh, work session, so I won't dive too much into detail there, other than they are showing the dedication of the additional right-of-way along Johnston Drive. Um, on this subject property, uh, the temporary easement, um, would be dedicated by separate agreement and exhibit, um, to be, uh, the, the exact dimensions to be determined with trail design and/or road design. So that would be coming, uh, at a later date, but that, that would be an agreement in there of this approval that they're going to give us that, that temporary easement is needed. Um, that's all I have for you there. I'd be happy to go into any more detail if needed, answering questions if you have anything. I do believe we have a representative of the applicant, um, on the line if they, if there's any questions of them or if they wish to add anything.
Uh, Clayton, I have a question. Is there parking, um, being discussed for the dog park?
I would probably defer to John on that since he's, uh, had more discussions on the actual design of a dog park to date.
One of the things that was being discussed, and, and Clayton, you can, uh, let me know, uh, where this has gone, but with the, with the applicant, there has been some discussions of a portion of the parking lot being dedicated over to, uh, a few stalls for the actual dog park itself. Um, are those conversations still going on, Clayton?
To my knowledge, they are. Barry Accountis is, um, that representative of the applicant and he may be able to touch on their perspective on that as well, um, if we want to allow them to speak.
That would be fine. Are they with it?
Looks like you have the ability on you.
Yes, I just did. Uh, thank you, Clayton. Thank you, Mayor. Um, in discussions with Clayton, with, uh, with the Iowa Finance Agency, we've talked about how we would handle parking for the dog park. Um, we would probably prefer not to dedicate those lot, those spaces on our property, probably not, not, not unheard of yet, but, uh, worst-case scenario, we'd probably work something out with, uh, the .56 acres, uh, perhaps, uh, we, we shrink in the 2.33. I don't know, but our goal is to get all the parking on the .56 acres for the dog park. We'll have adequate parking, plenty of room for parking on Lot Two. Um, and that won't be an issue, but whether or not we dedicate the spaces yet, uh, we've talked about it, we haven't nailed it down yet, but again, we would prefer to keep it on Lot A.
And one thing Barry and I had talked about is, um, with a site plan, the granting of an ingress egress easement so we can share the driveway access to Johnston Drive and then parking could come off of that onto Lot A there. That, that's the one item we've floated.
Yes.
And John, I don't know how far you are in design of the dog park to date.
Uh, not real far. We have the general concept, we've been looking at, uh, some of the area dog parks. Um, obviously this will be a relatively small park compared to some of them that have been developed. Um, so we're just trying to get the specifics of what we want as far as electric for some lighting, um, some, uh, a little bit of water possibly, um, so people have access to the water. So those are the main things. Um, nice thing is dog parks usually aren't over elaborate, so you need space, you need a little bit of shade and you need some places for the dogs to play in and possibly a puddle or two, but that's, that's ultimately what they want to see.
And if we're not able to get parking, the metro dog park that comes to mind is the Windsor Heights Dog Park right off of 235. They have only on-street parking, which is down, down the trail a bit, um, from the actual park there. And I always see people there, so it doesn't deter people from using spaces like this. So, um, the, the, there certainly discussions will continue into the site planning process and if we can make something work here, that's certainly our goal.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? If not... Sorry, my, uh, iPad went to sleep. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20-291?
I move, Ray.
Second, Scott.
We have a motion and a second, send the vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20-292?
I move, Ray.
Second, Scott.
We have a motion and a second, send the vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20-293?
So moved, Scott.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second, send the vote please.
Councilmember Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Motion passed. Moving on to item 8C, consider approval of the employment contract and agreement for the city administrator.
Yes, um, I, I'll go ahead and, um, address that. So as I've thought about my eventual retirement from the city, um, uh, what really dawned on me is I, as I go into 2021, that would be the, um, the final contract that I would enter into the, to, um, with the city. And so I, I felt that, uh, you know, rather than labor this and, and wait until then that, you know, be a good time to start discussing plans for my retirement and also some of the succession, uh, issues that we do need to take care of. And so, uh, I started putting together this, uh, this contract, my, which would be my final contract with the city. And we've had several discussions with the HR Finance Committee, uh, excuse, yeah, the HR Finance Committee on this to, to go over the terms and conditions and, and make sure that, um, uh, everybody is comfortable with what's being proposed. So what you have before you this evening would be a, a contract that would not go into effect until July 2021. But, um, uh, what it does is it, uh, out, um, outlines what, uh, what this would look like. Uh, my date that I've chosen is October 18 of 2022, so, uh, we're a little bit less than two years now from what my retirement date would be. But what this contract does, it, um, uh, talks about how I would burn down my paid time off. So my intention would be that after October 18 of 2022, I would start, um, utilizing my paid time off so that the, uh, my actual, I would actually get paid through January 5 of 2023, utilizing what I anticipate to be 420 hours of, uh, paid time, uh, time off that would have been accrued during that time. Uh, this contract also adjusts some, uh, items that are really no longer valid with this being the, the final contract period. So, um, there's, the red line draft shows what has been changed with some of those items. What's proposed for salary, I, I just put in a, a 3% increase, which has been consistent with what has, um, happened with, uh, the last several years within our, um, adjustments in... adjustments in pay, very consistent with what the bargaining units and other department heads and and staff have received. And so that's what's proposed here. It's a little bit ahead of time because we really haven't had the conversation with the city council yet on the twenty twenty two budget, which would really set those rates, but that's what I've included in this. Actually, this contract would go from July one twenty twenty one to June thirty twenty twenty two, and I wouldn't be retiring till October eighteenth, but this I've suggested this contract go for that additional time period beyond a full year, which actually comes out to about a year and a half with this contract. As I mentioned, that it's it's discusses what I would anticipate for paid time off. And you know, really, there's no additional items related to what I wouldn't normally get under the circumstances leaving during that time and and utilizing my paid time off. And and that has been, we've allowed that for a number of employees that have retired, the ability to go ahead and and spend down their paid time off at the end of their career. So this does contemplate my automobile allowance would end on October eighteen, since I wouldn't be reporting to work anymore, but it does also suggest that if for any reason I'd be called in during that period of time from October eighteen to January fifth, that I I would I would still technically be on call and and come in for anything that I might need to be called in for and and would plan to do that. And it just means I wouldn't be utilizing the paid time off during that period of time that I'd be actually coming in for those purposes. So again, it's it's pretty standard. It's not really much of a deviation from the contract that I currently have and had had for a number of years. It just sort of lays out what those final few months will look like for the contract. And so again, we've talked about this with HR Finance Committee. And I just felt, you know, it's probably probably better to go ahead and talk about this early because there are a lot of other things that we need to talk about and a couple of other issues we've been working with with the committee is the the replacement, finding my replacement, which would begin more than likely in the March-April timeframe of twenty twenty two. And also talking about some of the what we need to do to to make sure we've got staff in place to provide support for the new administrator and and you know, help us continue to go forward. And that'll be the item we discuss at the on the next agenda item. But with that, I just again, wanted to present this early so we know what the plan is going forward and and start working to that direction. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Also, any questions? Jim, I know we've discussed this several times, and I'm very supportive of what's being proposed in here. The only question I have now that I look at it this evening is it has at the very beginning that we're entering into this on the second day of March twenty twenty one. How do we reconcile the dates here?
Yeah, actually, my current contract, there are certain things that that, you know, are in place for that that need to be done by March first. And so the reason why I chose March second, because technically that that gets me past all the obligations within my current contract. And so, but that does say that the this contract, the term does begin July one of twenty twenty one, you can see on item three below there, but I put the date of March second up there because that technically sort of gets me through particularly the issue if the council doesn't want to renew my current contract, that's that says of March one, and so that's why I dated it that that point. And then at the actual term begins on July one twenty twenty one.
Yeah, I think it, I think we understand what is intended. Just it has three starting dates now in it. It'll have today's date on it, it'll have the March second date on it, and then it'll have the July first date, but I think I think we all understand what's intended.
You know, and I can see that, you know, I what I would suggest is maybe I can just amend it to have today's date as far as when it was updated. And then, of course, it's clear in there that it actually goes into effect July one twenty 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 one. So I I think that would make sense. If you if you would allow me to make that change, I would do that, and then that way it becomes more clear because it is is directly stated in there. It doesn't begin till July one twenty twenty one.
I think that makes more sense. Other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve? Just a second, I have to go back to the agenda here. Do we have a motion to approve the employment contract and agreement for the city administrator as as amended? We have a motion and a second all in favor. Oops, Cindy, call please.
Uh, Councilmember Co?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight D, consider approval of positions, position title changes and organization parts.
I'll go ahead and lead in on this item. And first of all, thank you for asking on the previous item. I I do appreciate that, and we've got a lot of work to do, but we will, we will keep moving forward. So so a as a part of the discussion related to my retirement, we also talked with the HR Finance Committee about putting forth some of the the structure within our organization, particularly on the administrative side, to put ourselves in a in a in the better best position we can for starting the search for these assistant administrator, making sure we've got the structure in place. One of the issues we talked about is that we're probably one of the largest communities in the state of Iowa without an assistant city administrator position. And we think that the committee talked about, and we thought that that would probably be something very key for whoever would want to apply for this position, that they know that they have that that position in place that can provide support and you know, for the new administrator once they get hired. And so we talked about our current staffing and where we are. We all know that in that Teresa performs a function for me. She actually technically really serves almost as assistant city administrator, although the title is not there. She does HR and finances really her title, HR Finance Director. And so it made sense for updating Teresa's job description and title to take on that city assistant city administrator role. In having conversations with the committee, Teresa has indicated at this point in time she's not interested in the position of the of the city administrator when that when we start doing that search. And and you know, that was a, you know, concern that her and I talked about. I mean, we don't want people thinking that we're making this change to put her in a in a different as an advantage for if she were to apply for the city administrator position, really is recognizing the role that she performs now and putting that in place because we think that's going to be important to applicants for the city administrator position. So that's what we talked about. We discussed this with the committee, the changes in in the job description and title and have provided that information to the the council. The other issue related to this is looking at what the what Cindy does in support of Teresa and the administration of our community. You know, we we all know that she has been a tremendous asset to us as we dealt with COVID. She's taken on more and more of the personnel type issues as Cindy, or excuse me, Teresa has been involving her in all the training over the last several years in preparing her to take on a greater role in our in our HR functions. And so what's being proposed is that in recognition of the work and and what Cindy has been doing to prepare herself, we are suggesting that we do a change in her job title to Director of Internal Operations slash City Clerk. She would have continue with the functions of City Clerk, continue with the functions of IT as well as taking on more of the role with our personnel and HR functions. And so that's what is being proposed for both those positions to put ourselves in a better administrative position. What we did not know, the last time we spoke with the committee, is what we talked in general, that whatever what wage adjustments or salary adjustments would be made for these two positions, and we didn't have that exact information the last time we talked about, although we talked in general what those might mean. So the staff report provided this evening gives that that's a specific information of what this would mean in moving Teresa's position and Cindy's position into these new roles, because it does change the level that they are within our HR or our compensation. It moves Teresa up to a different level as well as well as Cindy. And so to keep them in line both from an internal equity and external equity, there is a proposed adjustment in their wages to accomplish this. And so out of fairness, we didn't have those exact numbers for the HR Finance Committee, although in general, we talked about making these changes would be would be favorable. And so I wanted to share that with you this evening and and ask for council support in making those changes. The one thing we haven't really talked about is timing of when those those adjustments, particularly in wages, would have an impact. We had some conversation with the HR Finance Committee, whether you know, given where we are right now during the budget time, is this the right time to make those adjustments? Or do we need to wrap it up? And some of the conversation we had with our our budget, which we're playing, you know, obviously, we're working on our budget as we speak and and have a special meeting scheduled next week, but but anyway, but on the agenda or on the in the staff report, let's talk about the numbers and the amount that is proposed for these for these changes as well. So with that, I'd like to wonder or ask if Teresa or you know, has any additional comments and or any questions from the city council. Teresa, do you have anything to add? I know you've been very involved.
I just, the all the documents that were attached to the staff report were hopefully there to help explain things. I'm not sure if we've ever went into great detail with Councilman Ready and Soroka about our compensation plan and that each position has what's called a DBM rating. And that DBM rating is a rating for the position, not the person, but a rating of a position. And so one of the attachments or one of the documents I included was the salary ranges and the DBMs that were approved last last spring for July first of of twenty twenty. And so most department directors are a D sixty two. We have some that are D sixty ones. And both of these salary or both of these job descriptions were sent to our compensation consultant for her to put the rating on the position, not for Cindy or I to determine what that rating was. So you so you know that we didn't decide that for ourselves. My position would go to a D seventy one. And Cindy, I think, is currently a C forty three, but becoming a director level position, she would go to a D sixty one. And so then, one of the other Jim mentioned, internal equity. We had certainly done our external compensation gathering of information, and that was given to the HR Committee. But internal equity, then you were supplied a spreadsheet of the department directors and where their July first salaries were. And what I'm showing you because of at the bottom of each job description, I mentioned to you that the positions were either in Q two or Q three. And what that means is in in our world and our comp study, the midpoint or Q three is what the council determines ten years ago when we went to this compensation method is that that's the market wage for a position. And that our goal is to try to get to market or at least that five to ten percent to market, which each year I give you the what it would cost to go from anybody in a range to five percent to ten percent. So when I talked about Q two or Q three, I was talking about this Q two column. Or Q three is the most, that was just a little further explanation about what was at the bottom of those job descriptions, and then I'll answer any questions that you may have regarding how that compensation plan works. Was I going in and in and out because I just got a note that said my internet was unstable?
You know, Teresa, I think we heard most everything you said, at least I did. And and one thing I want to mention to the city council. We are, as Teresa said, we've been in this this method of compensation for about ten years now, and we've made adjustments as we've gone along. One thing that Teresa is preparing for the FY twenty three budget is a doing a compensation study or redo redoing our compensation study, which will be a very involved process where we will take a look at what we use as the basis for our for our compensation and and make updates to that. And that's where we go out and we get comparables from other communities and and update everything that we we have in there to make sure that our compensation is is comparable to what we utilize as our communities that we compare ourselves with. So 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 you know, we we have implemented these changes and changes within organization based on our the compensation study that we had done previously. But now we are working on updating it. We'll be working on updating it and getting a decision package so that we can take a look at our compensation throughout the throughout the organization, not next year, but the following year.
Annually, we look at any position that we may have had a question about whether it was falling out of range or not. And I know you may or may not remember that every now and then you'll do a a separate little group of like we did the the rank, the ranking of the police officers and the firefighters, and we did other little studies. And so in every time, anytime we've re rewritten a job description or changed anything in the structure in that in the last ten years, that compensation consultant has been helpful to us. It's just a matter of now that we've done that a lot for over the ten years, it would be helpful to just make sure that we're all still on track for the whole overall system.
So Jim, but I understand what's being proposed here. The staff report indicates that there would be some salary adjustments based on these changes. Have those salary adjustments been incorporated then into the numbers that we're seeing in this chart or how?
Yes. In that department director chart?
Yes.
Oh, Cindy already closed it, sorry. But yes, yes, that so that even though it said twenty twenty one, Mayor.
Right.
Um, Cindy was never would have not been in this group before. So now she would be with that salary wage that we're proposing at a hundred and eight. And then I was at a D sixty two. I've kind of crossed myself out a couple lines above where I am now. I was, I I'm at one thirty five three, and the proposal is to go to one thirty seven eight.
That's helpful. This was a little confusing to me.
Sorry, I should have explained that.
Nope, that's that's good.
Any other questions? Comments?
Comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the position title changes in organization chart?
So moved Scott.
A second.
Yep.
You have a motion and a second. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Let me just say, I think that Cindy and, and Teresa both do an outstanding job for us. And I think these are, um, these are, these are good changes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah. Item eight E, consider approval of the following items related to PZ case twenty dash fifteen, the final plat for Ridge, Ridge Dale Heights Plat one. Subject property is located south of Northwest Seventieth Avenue and west of Northwest One Hundredth Street. Resolution twenty dash three zero seven, a resolution approving a development agreement with Transition Properties LLC, Timbercrest Homes LLC and Hope Cave Farms LLC, regarding public parkland dedication requirements for Ridgedale Heights. Resolution twenty dash three zero eight, a resolution approving a stormwater management facilities maintenance agreement with Transition Properties LLC and Timbercrest Homes LLC for stormwater management facilities constructed with Ridgedale Heights Plat one, public improvements. And resolution twenty dash three zero nine, a resolution accepting public easements within Outlaw A, Outlaw B and Outlaw D Ridgedale Heights Outlaws. And finally, resolution twenty dash three ten, a resolution approving the final plat for Ridgedale Heights Plat one. Wow, a lot of stuff.
You're welcome, Mayor. This is Clayton. Um, Transition Properties LLC has submitted this final plat for the subdivision of twenty-seven point four eight acres into forty lots for single-family homes, two unbuildable outlots that'd be for future development and three public street lots. The action items tonight do include the acceptance of public easements outside the boundaries of this plat, but are necessary to support the public infrastructure being installed with this plat. Um, so that's what all those offsite easements are for you. This plat is within the Ridgedale Heights development that was preliminary platted, uh, earlier this year. In total, it would be a hundred and ninety-five single-family lots and about two hundred and forty townhome properties, um, when fully completed. So this is just phase one. Um, it includes access to Northwest Seventieth Avenue via an extension in Northwest One Hundred and Sixth Street and, uh, the construction of two new east-west roads, Grenville Drive, which would future connect into Grinds and Powell Avenue, which will future connect into Northwest One Hundredth Street. Um, the site will have access to sanitary sewer, water and storm sewer, uh, generally drains from west to east, uh, into a new wet pond that's being constructed down near the corner of Seventieth and a Hundredth, um, right now. Uh, in regards to Parkland dedication with the preliminary plat, council did approve, um, that there'd be, uh, park located about a block south of, um, of this plat here. Um, and they'd be doing, uh, upsizing the sidewalk throughout the development to ten-foot trails. So from five-foot trail to ten-foot. And between that, it, the park lane and the trail, they'd meet the requirement. It just requires that they do, uh, the parkland dedication with a future phase. So the, the agreement just stipulates when that will, uh, be dedicated. Really a very brief overview there. Um, happy to go into further detail if needed. Um, it's consistent with the preliminary plat, comprehensive plan zoning. So Planning and Zone Commission has recommended approval.
Any questions for Clayton? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty dash three zero seven?
I'm sorry.
Second, cope.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty dash three zero eight?
I'm sorry.
Second, Evans.
You know, a motion and a second. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Soroka?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty, twenty dash three zero nine?
Evans moved.
Cope, second.
We have a motion, a second. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty dash three ten?
Move approval, cope.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item eight F, consider approval of resolution number twenty dash three eleven, a resolution approving the final plat for Ridgedale Heights Townhomes Plat one. Subject property is located south of Northwest Seventieth Avenue and east of Northwest One Hundred Sixth Street. PZ case twenty dash twenty-seven.
Be a lot quicker on this one since it's immediately adjoining the previous, uh, case. Uh, Timbercrest Homes has submitted this final plat. It subdivides twenty-one point four acres into fifty-four buildable townhome lots, one common area lot and one unbuildable outlaw for future development. The intention is that these would be for sale townhome units and the entire development would be constructed in three phases, generally two streets at a time. Uh, so we're on the western two streets and there'll be six streets total. So, uh, consistent with the preliminary plat and site plan that's on file, uh, consistent with comprehensive plan, consistent with zoning and Planning Commission has recommended approval. I am willing to go into, uh, more detail if needed or answering questions.
Councilor, any questions?
If not. Clayton, uh, I, I do have one. Clayton, is there, is there additional parking on these cul-de-sac streets? Or is it only parking provided what's on the driveway of the townhomes?
No, Cindy, if you could pull up the, yeah, that and then go to the second page. So each individual townhome will have a two-car garage and the ability for two vehicle parking spaces in the driveway. And then on the southern road, which is the private extension of Grenville Drive, there's parallel parking spaces along the northern edge of the, of the roadway there. And they'd be additional as you get into phase two, phase three of the development.
Wow. I mean, that's, uh, the parking's quite a distance away from some of these units. Uh, my sister lives at a townhome. I don't know. That seems pretty inconvenient, but this is per our ordinances?
Uh, this is per the approved site plan. And it does meet city ordinance. Uh, we do not have a distance requirement, how far parking needs to be from particular units. You are correct. There is some distance there, especially on the northern units there. On this particular site, there was a lot of balancing between the various needs of, uh, stormwater management, traffic circulation, pedestrian circulation, where the parking stalls go, fire ac- access. So, um,
Well, and plus, when you're driving down this very long cul-de-sac road, there's not a turnaround at the end. Uh, you're going to be using the end townhomes to, if you need to turn around.
Well, I guess you got two options. Uh, you either turn around in driveway or you turn around in the fire truck turnaround, which is those, um, stubs to the, he's there that Cindy's highlighting over. Those are fire truck turnaround. So vehicle turnarounds.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know.
There was discussion with this at P and Z. Um, they didn't feel that at this time a change to this particular site was warranted because it is consistent with the approved site plan. Uh, but they do want this to be an item to be looked at with the city code update, which is upcoming. So it is on staff's to-do list.
I think that that's a good thing to have a discussion because, uh, I feel like there's going to be all sorts of people parking in the fire lane turnaround at the end. The snow removal is going to be horrid, horrible because there'll be no place to put it. Anyway, uh, yes. That sounds good that we're going to be reviewing this. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think at P and Z, the discussion was more on total number. I don't think we really, they got too deep into the distance by.
Distance, yeah.
I, I, I think you bring up a good point there that there may be merit to, uh, having some sort of distance requirement. So it's on our to-do list.
Yeah, Councilwoman Martin, I think we're going to hear complaints about this. I mean, in, in the future, once those, those townhomes are occupied, people are gonna, are, 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 I, I think we're going to hear some concerns, but, um, any other questions?
Well, is there street parking along, allowed along those streets or not?
Uh, the north-south roads, no, because effectively they're all driveway.
So how, both that holly and blue belt, holly court and blue belt court, there's no parking on both sides? Is that right?
That's correct. They, they're either twenty or twenty-four feet in width. I can't remember the exact dimension. Um, but typically there wouldn't be parking, but just based on where, uh, driveway accesses are, mailbox pads, you can't park there without blocking someone's house.
And would the, the fire truck turnarounds both be marked as no parking?
Yes, there's intended to be, uh, designated no parking zones.
Other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty dash three eleven?
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight G, consider approval of claims in the amount of three million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighteen cents. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved Evans.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to administrative staff comments. Jim?
I've got a couple of things I want to cover very quickly. Um, first of all, uh, last week I sent out a note to the mayor and council regarding the appointments to boards and commissions and I got a response from, um, uh, almost everybody. Part of it was just explaining that our past practice has been that typically the January after the election, we sort of take a look at all the boards and commissions that the council serves on and, and has them, uh, uh, has the council determine which ones they want to. And then we, we try to, um, divvy up the work as best we can for that. And then on the off years, which where there is an election like this year, typically people just continue in their current role for the next year. And so I, uh, shared that information with the council. And, uh, as you can see, uh, tonight, we actually had three appointments to some of the uh, boards and commissions that council represent the city on. And there'll be more coming up, but, um, I did have a couple of council members that want, uh, wanted us to look into, um, some other, um, or are interested in some other committees. What I'm going to do is I, I'll follow up on offline on that because these aren't necessarily ones that we have an official resolution that we appoint, uh, folks to. So I'll follow up with everybody that mentioned that they like, they're like for, to be considered for another, um, committee and, and, uh, we'll, we'll try to handle that offline. So, uh, just want to let you know that I'm, I'm working on that and, and, uh, we'll continue making the appointments that are required, uh, by resolution. Um, probably have a couple more at the next council meeting. Um, we already talked about the, the December fifteenth work session uh, on the budgets, uh, and, uh, just reminder that begins at five thirty. I did want to, and I've, I've already shared with the council a, um, invite to the, um, strategic planning session, which is scheduled on, uh, January fifth. And, uh, that'll be the, the follow-up or second part of that strategic planning process. So we will have that meeting on that evening. And then, um, uh, just after the last council meeting, or I guess the last two council meetings, we had some questions on, um, and confusion on how citizens look up the audio from our city council meetings. And so, um, I thought I'd ask Cindy to go ahead and share that with the council, um, just to make sure everybody understands how we go about if, if, if a citizen wants to have access to, uh, city council audio, you know, what they need to do so that, uh, uh, you know, they'll be aware how to, how to accomplish that. So Cindy, if you could explain, uh, how we do that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. We actually, um, when we started meeting Zoom, um, and actually Board Docs kind of changed their format to when everyone went to Zoom. Um, so we post the video for all meetings now, um, as part of our discussion for moving into the new building where we were going to be live streaming our meetings on YouTube. We just kind of, kind of veered that way already so that people were used to looking for the video in one location. So from the city's website, um, agendas and minutes takes you to Board Docs. Um, and I'm not logged into Board Docs. This is just the public side, not the, not the staff side. And then any meetings in 2020, you can just randomly pick a meeting and there's video, a video clip that will show the meeting and the materials as you go through. Um, this is also out on the city adjustments websites, um, or YouTube, sorry, on their YouTube, same thing. The, uh, the meetings are posted along with, uh, look, there's Councilmember Martin, um, along with the materials. So they're available in both places. Um, when everybody, with, with coronavirus and going to Zoom, Board Docs made some changes. That video link was not an option prior to COVID. So, um, it's there now. There is, when we get, um, the video streaming in the, in the new council chambers, when we come back, we will, there's a, an ability to live stream right from the Board Docs meeting as well. So that's what we will be doing. And typically this meeting video is posted on the day after the meeting. Um, so tomorrow's meeting or tonight's meeting will be posted tomorrow.
Cindy, I don't know if, if, maybe this isn't the right time to ask this question, but uh, uh, looking at the city's YouTube page.
Yes.
It seems to me, one thing it'd be nice is if like, for instance, the various videos were organized, like all the city council meetings.
Sure.
Were, uh, our work sessions or any sort of, you know, council, um, you know, type meetings where, so you could kind of click on a link and then it would show it kind of in order. I mean, I just went to the, cause I, I know this, the, the question popped up when we had our sort of special meeting oh, a couple of weeks ago, um, and people were, we, I, the, the, the link on the, on the, um, the Zoom link wasn't working. And so some people wanted to, to see how that discussion went. Um, and so I tried to send them to the YouTube page, but at, at that point, the meeting wasn't posted. And so just going back to the YouTube page right now, it's, it's, to me, it'd be really helpful if we organized the, the various, you know, videos we've got, you know, whether it be a council meeting or, you know, a message from police and fire or message for the mayor, just some sort of organization to it, to me, would make it a little bit easier to work with.
Okay.
Um, this is Janet. I'm chiming in regards to this. Um, I'll have to look at this a little bit more, how I think, um, it's done on YouTube. Is it, organizes it based on the most recent video that's posted? I don't know if we can add those different things. Maybe we can. I haven't gone in there to look, but.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm certainly no expert on YouTube. I have to ask my kids how to do that, but, um, but, um, but I don't know if there's a channels or that playlist or something like that gives you the opportunity to organize those. Or, or maybe, maybe the easiest way is just to do it on the city's website. I did, I just, I, it'd be nice to be able, if somebody wants to find a council meeting, to be able to send them, you know, know where's the easiest place to send them, whether it's our website or the YouTube page or, or where. to be able to send them, you know, know where's the easiest place to send them, whether it's our website or the YouTube page or, or where on that. And, and I think we got a little bit of a ways to go on that. We're not quite there yet, so.
I would agree with you. I think it's difficult for somebody going in there and having to funnel through all the different videos that are in there, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's why we added them to, to Board Docs, because if you knew you were looking for, you know, the special meeting then from Board Docs, that video is right there on that agenda. Yeah, I agree. YouTube was clunky. That's why we, we started putting up with the, with the Board Docs information.
Real quick, I just said, I think Councilman Cope's suggestion is a great one. And I think potentially the playlist feature would be really good. We could just have a playlist of, you know, whatever the categories were, whether it was council meetings or police, fire, that type of thing. So that might be worth exploring.
Yeah, especially as we get into live streaming, you know, we'll have more, more video availability. So yeah, it definitely needs to be a little more streamlined, I agree.
Questions, that's all we had for this. Does any other staff have any things they want to bring up to the council? Sounds like that might be it for this evening, Mayor.
Sorry Jim, I had one quick one here. I can find the date of this. We are working on setting the date for the first broadband public meeting. And I just wanted to run the date by you because I got it today. And it is It is 6:30, January 13th. If any council members wanted to attend, I wanted to make sure that would work for you. So let me know if that's an issue. Otherwise, we'll be planning on moving forward with January 13th, that's 6:30, and that would be a virtual meeting that would also likely be posted to YouTube and Facebook for post-meeting viewing.
That date and time works for me. Just a question on that, do we know what the structure of the meeting is? Is it like, are we inviting people to brainstorm different things? Are we giving them a presentation? Or maybe we still have to figure that out.
I haven't seen a full agenda yet from HR Green, but I know presentation of initial survey results and some initial other information from their studies is going to be a significant component of that first public meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So Adam, is it, are they, is, is, is there like a city council committee that's sort of working with with HR Green or is that, how is that being kind of assigned? Are they just working directly with staff? How's that process sort of working? Because this, this, I, I mean, I knew, obviously we had signed the contract with HR Green, but I hadn't really heard anymore of what, where the, where we are and now we're hearing about this meeting. So where's, who's the, who is he from an elected official standpoint, are they interacting with?
So currently, we don't have a committee assigned to be working on this, although I think there was a committee that initially reviewed the HR Green contract, but recall, it may have gone through the Economic Development Committee. We can certainly convene them, convene a group of elected officials to, to get an update here, if that's what you'd like to do. Currently, staff has just been working with HR Green to put together that survey and the GIS information that they need to do their initial analysis.
Yeah, I, I'd like to sort of, sort of be plugged in because they've got a pretty big mission and, and I think we need to help give them some direction on what, what they're tackling. And so whether, if it's the Economic Development Committee or if it's a different committee, I sort of feel like a little disconnected from that right now. And so I'd like to, to rectify that.
Yeah. Adam, I, I agree with Councilman Cope. I think that the Economic Development Committee has been engaged in this discussion and I think it needs to continue to be and, and involved and, and used as a sounding board. So we need to, we need to loop them back into the process.
Sounds good. We'll get a meeting set up.
Okay.
There certainly was a committee or someone that looked at all the proposals we received.
That was the Economic Development Committee.
Okay.
Haven't been, since that decision was made, there's not been any, nothing more has happened from our end, so.
Alright.
Okay, thanks for sharing that, Adam. Anything else, Jim or staff?
That's it, Mayor.
Okay, city council members? Councilman Cope?
I guess I just, you know, want to follow up on what the mayor said. When we had, I think the discussions on both with Jim's kind of contract and also the, the staff changes as far as different things. I think as a city, I just want to pass along, I think we're really blessed with the super high quality of staff that we've got. And one thing I've noticed in my years on the council that Jim has really had a strong approach of building a strong team. And, and thinking about not just the current people who are in positions, but you know, what would be potential folks who might, you know, when people move along, kind of a you know, plans for that. Really appreciate that approach. And I think that's been reflected as well by the, by the work that Teresa and Cindy have done and and, and obviously appropriately that they were get some of that recognition through the action we took tonight. So I just want to support what was said earlier about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Evans?
Nothing. Thank you.
Councilman Soroka?
No comments, thank you.
Councilwoman Martin?
I do not have any comments, thanks.
And Councilman Reddy?
I don't have any comments today.
Okay, great. And I don't either. So do we have anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned. Thanks all.
Good night, guys.
Thank you.